Can I ask everybody to please stand so I can salute the flag?
Counselor Brown?
Here.
Counselor Judith Garcia?
Present.
Counselor Tenere Garcia is absent.
She's called in and she won't be here tonight.
Counselor Lopez?
Yeah.
Counselor Robinson?
Yeah.
Counselor Recubro?
Yes.
Counselor Vito?
Present.
Counselor De Jesus?
Present.
Counselor Haddelberg?
Here.
Counselor Vega?
Yes.
And Counselor Taylor?
Here.
Ten members present, one absent. You have a quorum. First order of business, we have a public hearing for the FY 2024 tax rates, residential exemption, and minimum residential tax factor.
We have a public hearing. Is anybody here to speak in regards to the tax rate? Seeing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting.
Next, we have public speaking.
Anybody for public speaking? May take the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joe Chefko. I live in Ten Catherine Drive in Puyboddy. I am retired from the fire department. I've been 32 years, and I've been an elected member of the retirement board for the past 27 years. Every year, the retirement board takes a vote to give the retirees a cost of living increase. The most we can give them is 3% of the first $12,000 or $360 a year. In 2010, the state legislature passed a law giving the retirement board the authority to raise that $12,000 cap in $1,000 increments. Now, it's done by a vote of retirement board and the approval of the local former of government, city council. Now, in March, the retirement board voted to raise that cap from $12,000 to $15,000. That increase, from $12,000 to $15,000, will give the retirees an extra $7.50 a month. Now, out of 105 retirement systems in the state, City of Chelsea is one of four who has not raised the $12,000 cap. I'm getting a lot of flack from the retirees saying, "Why are we always the last one?" Now, we didn't think it was appropriate to address the city council with this 10 years ago because of the condition of the retirement system at the time. But the last 10 years, we've done incredibly well. You see, every two years, we have an actuarial audit of the retirement system to see how well we're doing. This was our year. We got the report in November stating that, in complete essay, we're 88% funded, and we will be fully funded, projected to be fully funded, in the fiscal year 2027. Just three and a half years, we'll be fully funded. Now, it's not a secret that the employees 20, 25 years ago really weren't the highest-paid employees in the area. City of Chelsea really couldn't afford to pay these people a lot of money. So when these people retired 20, 25 years ago, their retirement was average at best. And over the last 15 or 10 years, I can't, I have to tell you what inflation has done to these people's pensions. Now, the poverty level in 2023 for an individual is $14,500. We have 96 retirees with pensions at that or below. Two-member households, that number is $19,700. We have 154 retirees at or below that number. Now, that's before federal taxes and insurance deductions. Now, many retirees don't qualify for Social Security because you work for the city. They don't take out Social Security. And even if they do qualify from other jobs, whatever it may be, Social Security cuts your benefits up to 60% because you have a municipal pension. That happened to me. When I told the woman at Social Security that I had a public pension, she actually laughed at me. Now, I just want to say something. I know I see some young faces here, not you, Leo. But I was young too, when I was 20-something, 30 years old. And you never really think about getting old. But you know what? One day I woke up, and I said, "Where did those 50 years go? I'm in my 70s now." So it's going to happen. And I hope that young people here in this board, when you're 70, 75, or 80, and you're sitting home with your grandchildren, I hope there's somebody out there fighting for you to get your quality of life better. Now, I stand here, represent 400 and some odd retirees. Honestly, I'm more concerned with the people in their 70s, 80s, and 90s. These are the people that are really, really hurting.
One minute.
Sure. Oh, it's done. So what, I think when this presentation, when you get this in front of the city council, you'd be doing a great service to these people. They really would appreciate it, that these people, men and women, who worked for the city for many, many years, to make the city what it is today. So I respectfully request that when this does come in front of the city council, that you would approve the request from the retirement board to raise this from $12,000 to $15,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers for public speaking? State your name and address for the record.
Carl Allen, 500 Broadway, City Hall. I'm here in two roles. The first is on behalf of the Department of Housing and Community Development. You have a communication from the planning board before you recommending unanimously to adopt the Transit Community Overlay District. And I encourage you to do that as soon as possible, and certainly before the statutory or regulatory deadline of the end of the calendar year. So that's an obligation of this council. Secondly, on behalf of United Steelworkers Local 9427, urging you to approve and fund the collective bargaining agreement, which is in front of you in two orders, 24-F14 and 24-F15. Additionally, the union has a serious concern with 24-F20. In the interest of being able to pay select positions, whatever it wants, the administration continues to classify positions as exempt, from the union's perspective, without justification. We currently have an active grievance against the administration over the classification of the Director of Constituent Services as exempt. And I, on behalf of the union, urge you to table that until the administration sits down with us and discusses this, which they, to date, have not done. So please table 24-F20 until the administration gets around to talking with labor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers for public speaking? Seeing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting.
Next, we have approval of the minutes for the regular city council meeting dated November 20 of 2023.
Counselor Brown moves accept and file the minutes under suspension. Seeing no objections, so move.
Next, we have communications from the city manager. We have a communication received from city manager Ned Keefe requesting approval for departments to pay prior year expenses. Dear counselors, I am writing to request approval for the fire department to make payments of prior year expenses from its FY 24 budget. From time to time, municipal agencies are unable to effectuate payments to a vendor in a...
There'll be some coming up on the new business. Next order.
Next, we have a communication received from city manager Ned Keefe requesting approval for transfers for fire vehicle acquisition. Dear counselors, I am writing with a request to transfer capital funds in the fire department to allow for the reallocation of funds from the M1 staff vehicle to an additional H1 staff vehicle. This request does not require any new funding. You may recall that last...
Counselor Haddelberg moves waive the rest of the reading and move it to a second reading, and some coming up on the new business.
Next, we have a communication received from city manager Ned Keefe regarding appointments to boards and commissions. Dear counselors, pursuant to Section 4-2 of the...
Seeing no objection, so move.
Next, we have a communication received from city manager Ned Keefe requesting for funds for city manager staff. Dear counselors, as the city plans for the transition to the new city manager on January 1st, I am writing to request funding for the executive office staffing planned outlined in the communication dated November...
Move to accept and file a communication under suspension, waive the reading. If there are no objections, there'll be something coming up on the new business.
Actually, we move to a second reading. Chair recognizes Counsel Haddelberg.
I want to rise to speak on the communication on this one because I think we won't have the opportunity to speak as the order gets moved to a second reading. I think this is one that we'll probably have some debate back and forth over. I wanted to simply offer my opinion that having hired the city manager, I do believe we should essentially let him structure his office. And, you know, I'm not saying I believe he gets a blank check, but I do believe he deserves our support for his ideas. And so at least for my personal judgment, I look at this as a reasonable concept for structuring his office, and I view a vote for it as a vote to essentially support his concept for how he believes his office should be structured. So when we see it, not this meeting, but next meeting, I do intend to support it and wanted to get that into the conversation.
Counselor Vito?
Thank you, Mr. President. My apologies. I didn't realize that we were going to move it to a second reading. There wouldn't be any debate. I know that there was a speaker that just spoke against the order. We have to be very careful, I think, as counselors, and walk in the line and making sure that we're allowing the city manager to operate the day-to-day administration and not for us to impede anymore. Of course, we're responsible for allowing the budget. And I do also believe that the new city manager, we have a new council coming in, a new city manager, and I think that it would be in bad faith to select a new city manager and not allow them to design or create the structure for their office that they believe can work better for the community. I think it sets a bad message that we're already fighting, or that there are grievances against the creation of something, of someone hasn't even started. So I think that, you know, sometimes they always don't work, and we have to reinvent the wheel. Maybe it works, maybe it doesn't, but it would be really unfair for us to not even give it a try, or to start grieving or airing grievances before the opportunity has even, before the administration has even started. So I, as well, will be supporting the motion when it comes before us next week, next meeting.
Well, I would request that we have a conference so that we can speak about the positions. I guess, as you heard tonight, there's some comments in regards to one of the positions on the table that's already being grieved. So I think as a body, we should have a conference and be able to address the...
Would that be happening before the end of the year?
Yeah, it will be because I know that the city manager's going out of the country, and if possible, I'd like to set it up for next Tuesday night if everybody's available.
Okay.
Okay, next order.
Next, we have a communication received from city manager Ned Keefe regarding Marginal Street sidewalk emergency stabilization appropriation from General Stabilization Fund. Dear counselors, I am writing to request an amount of $150,000 for emergency work to be performed to stabilize the eroding shoreline that is undermining the sidewalk alongside Marginal Street.
Counsel Haddelberg moves away the rest of the meeting and move it to a second reading. There'll be something coming up on the new business.
We move on to communications and petitions to the council. We have a communication received from John De Priest, Director of Permitting and Land Use Planning, regarding zoning amendment, Chapter 34, Article 12, Chapter 34, Section 158(c)(2) marijuana retailers. Dear Counselor Robinson, at a meeting of the Chelsea Planning Board held on Tuesday, November 29, 2023, at which a quorum was present and a public hearing was held, the planning board reviewed the proposed zoning amendment to delete Section 34-158(c)(2), which reads as follows. Marijuana retailers are prohibited from operating between the hours of 9:00 p.m. and 9:00 a.m. The board reviewed the proposed amendment and received comments from a member of the public in support of the amendment. The board voted unanimously 6-0 to recommend the council approve the amendment to delete the section as proposed.
Counsel Haddelberg moves accept and file a communication, refer to a public hearing, and that'll take place on December 18th.
Next, we have a communication received from John De Priest, Director of Permitting and Land Use Planning, regarding zoning amendment indoor commercial recreation. Dear Counselor Robinson, at a meeting of the Chelsea Planning Board held Tuesday, November 29, 2023, at which a quorum was present and a public hearing was held, the planning board reviewed the proposed zoning amendment to change the definition of indoor commercial recreation, Section 34-24, to include more uses. Amend Section 34-300 to change the theater, concert halls, and cinema land use category to include exhibition hall. Amend Section 34-241 to add a definition of exhibition hall, and to amend Section 34-241 to change the definition of health and fitness club to include more uses. The board reviewed the proposed amendments and voted 5-0 to recommend that the council approve the amendments as proposed.
Counsel Haddelberg moves accept and file a communication under suspension, move to a public hearing, which will take place on December 18th.
Finally, we have a copy of a communication received from John De Priest, Director of Permitting and Land Use Planning, regarding zoning amendment Transit Community Overlay District. Dear Counselor Robinson, at a meeting of the Chelsea Planning Board held Tuesday, November 29, 2023, at which a quorum was present and a public hearing was held, the planning board reviewed the proposed zoning amendments relative to the adoption of a Transit Community Overlay District. Said amendments would amend Section 34-28 by adding TCOD and Transit Community Overlay District at the bottom of the table. Insert a new Section 34-188, titled Transit Community Overlay District. Amend the official zoning map to include the map of the Transit Community Overlay District, and revise the title of Section 34-216 to read as follows. Design review procedures for the residential 3, retail business 2, light industrial office 2, and transit community overlay districts. The board reviewed the proposed amendment and received comments from the Department of Housing and Community Development and its consultant. It was pointed out to the board by the consultant team that the maximum number of units per acre proposed in the table in Section 34-188B would not allow for development of housing in compliance with the MBTA Communities Act. The board was informed that the proposed maximum, shown as 30 on the table, should be 40 units per acre. Based on the input from the Department of Housing and Community Development and its consultant, the board voted unanimously 6-0 to recommend that the council approve the amendment with the revision that the maximum number of units per acre be revised from 30 to 40, as shown in the table on the next page.
Counselor Taylor moves accept and file a communication under suspension, refer to a public hearing, and that public hearing will take place December 18th.
We move on to second readings. We have a communication received from city manager Ned Keefe being read for the second time regarding reappointments to library board of trustees.
I ask that we don't read the entire communication, but that we just say the names of the people on the board that they'll be appointed to.
And we'll ask for a roll call vote on the adoption.
And then we'll all ask a roll call vote for the adoption.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor.
Requesting reappointment of Ms. Alexandria Christmas of Chelsea for a three-year term on the Board of Library Trustees, and Monica Elias, also of Chelsea, for a new three-year term on the Board of Library Trustees. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia is absent. Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Recubro?
Yes.
Counselor Vito?
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus?
Yes.
Counselor Haddelberg?
Yes.
Counselor Vega? And Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Ten members in favor, none opposed, one absent. The appointments are approved. Next, we have an order introduced by Counsel President Robinson being read for the second time. Order that pursuant to Section 4-3-L of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, the Chelsea City Council approves the cost items set forth in the collective bargaining agreement negotiated with United Steelworkers Local 9427, memorialized in the memorandum of agreement for fiscal years 2024 through 2026.
Chair recognizes Counsel Haddelberg. Clerk will call the roll once he's set.
Counselor Brown?
Yes, for the adoption.
Counselor Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia is absent. Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Recubro?
Yes.
Counselor Vito?
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus?
Yes.
Counselor Haddelberg?
Yes.
Counselor Vega? And Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent. The order is adopted. Next, we have an order introduced by Counsel President Robinson being read for the second time. Order that to fund the collective bargaining agreement negotiated with United Steelworkers Local 9427 for fiscal year 2024. The Chelsea City Council authorizes the transfer of $175,858 from salary reserve account to FY 2024 regular salaries account to fund the FY 2024 contract wage increases.
Counselor Haddelberg moves a roll call on the adoption.
No, I'd like to send it to subcommittee.
Why?
No, you can't.
Why?
It's a second reading.
But we never finished. When we had the subcommittee, it was canceled. We didn't go all the way through it. At the end, we left.
I have a motion to adopt a roll call vote.
I make a motion to send it to subcommittee because we didn't get a chance to finish it because you stopped it towards the end. Well, let's vote on the motion to send it to the subcommittee so at least the new counselors can have an opportunity to talk on it and finish all the things that are in it because we didn't finish it.
You want amended to try to send it to conference?
I do not want to amend it.
I want amended, send it to conference. I do. I want to send it to conference because we didn't get to finish. Our subcommittee we had, we didn't finish it.
We never had a conference on this, Counselor. But your motion, we'll take up your motion about sending it to conference.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, Counselor Haddelberg.
So the order we have in front of us here is one that funds the collective bargaining agreement that we just unanimously voted for. I believe it's important to fund those things that we say we're going to do. Based on that, I don't believe we should send it to a subcommittee to talk about whether or not we're going to fund it, and I believe I'll be voting against sending it to a subcommittee. If that's supported, then I will be voting for funding our obligations.
Right. So this here has to do with the subcommittee we have on the board, the legislators?
No, no, no.
Is it something else?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so let it go through then.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear good enough. They didn't give me my earplug.
This is supporting the steelworkers.
Oh, that's, yeah, yeah, give them that. I thought it was something else.
Well...
I'm sorry to the public. They didn't supply me with an earplug, so I can't hear too good.
So you...
The city should give me a nice earplug so I can...
We got that. Can you withdraw your motion?
Yes, I withdraw my motion.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Now on the original motion, the clerk will call a roll call on the adoption.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia is absent. Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Recubro?
Yes.
Counselor Vito?
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus?
Yes.
Counselor Haddelberg?
Yes.
Counselor Vega?
Do whatever you need to do, Counselor.
I would actually ask if I could speak on the original motion on this one, if that's acceptable.
We just adopted it.
Fair enough. It's okay.
Counselor Vega?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent. Order is adopted. Move on to new business. We have an order introduced by Counsel Vito. Order that the city manager instruct the director of emergency management to report to the city council as to the status of the city's emergency evacuation plan by the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
Chair recognizes Counsel Vito.
Thank you. I move to adopt this unanimously under suspension. If there are no objections...
Seeing no objections, so move.
To make a couple of brief comments.
You have the floor, few.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm coming to the end of my tenure here as a counselor, and when I first came in, there were a lot of questions about where is our emergency evacuation plan? We have shore tanks that line the perimeter of our beautiful city here, water. We've had a history of a lot of fires, and the way that we've been developing as of late kind of has raised some concerns about if there is an emergency, where should we go? Where's the emergency evacuation plan? And it started with Mr. Albert, who was the director of emergency management, to the two people that came after him. I can't even remember the names that were here, so such a short time. And everybody kept promising, "We're going to do it, we're going to do it, we're going to do it," and it was just empty promises. And so I would like, before I leave, to ensure that we are at least moving somewhere in the direction of coming up with some type of emergency management plan. And even if it's for the director of emergency management to come here and be like, "We're working on it. It'll be done in February. That'll suffice." I just want to make sure that there's a level of accountability and that that conversation is moving forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Seeing no other speakers, next order.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counsel Vito. Order that in light of upcoming holiday celebrations, the city manager direct relevant city departments to include Eid symbolism, including crescent moons and stars, to represent the members of our Muslim community.
I move to adopt unanimously under suspension. If there are no objections, I'd like to speak on it.
Seeing no objections, you have the floor, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chelsea's a community of immigrants, and for every wave of folk that come from all parts of this world, we've always welcomed them with open arms. Our schools speak more than two dozen different languages. I remember before I came on the council, we didn't even have any Christmas decorations, and now we do. We have symbolism for people who celebrate different traditions during the holiday time. We even have some symbolism for our Jewish community, and I just want to make sure that we're honoring our Muslim community as well, and that we're including symbolism so that they can join in the festivities, and we can be a bit more inclusive with the celebrations. I do want to make sure that whoever gets this done, that they do consult with the Muslim community because there is, the symbolism has to face a certain way, and we want to make sure that we're not disrespecting our community and that we're honoring them. So this is just an effort to try to make sure that we're practicing our values and including our Muslim community and celebrating their traditions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next order of business.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counsel President Robinson and all members of the city council. Order that the Chelsea City Council adopt a minimum residential tax factor for the fiscal year 2024 with a 1.75 commercial, industrial, and personal property shift factor.
Counsel Haddelberg moves for a roll call vote on the adoptions. Clerk will call a roll.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia is absent. Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Recubro?
Yes.
Counselor Vito?
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus?
Yes.
Counselor Haddelberg?
Yes.
Counselor Vega?
Yes.
And Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Ten members in favor, none opposed, one absent. Order is adopted.
Next order.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counsel President Robinson and all members of the city council. Order that the Chelsea City Council adopt a 35% residential exemption for fiscal year 2024.
Counsel Haddelberg moves a roll call on the adoption.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia is absent. Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Recubro?
Yes.
Counselor Vito?
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus?
Yes.
Counselor Haddelberg?
Yes.
Counselor Vega? And Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Ten members in favor, none opposed, one absent. Order is adopted. Next, we have an order introduced by Counsel President Robinson. Order that in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 64, Budget Management Procedures, whereby costs incurred in FY 2022 and '23 were not paid and are owed to the vendors...
Counsel Haddelberg moves to a second reading. We could vote on it. We actually could vote on this order. Do you want to... Haddelberg will move for a roll call vote on the adoption.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia is absent. Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Recubro?
Yes.
Counselor Vito?
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus?
Yes.
Counselor Haddelberg?
Yes.
Counselor Vega? And Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Ten members in favor, none opposed, one absent. Order is adopted. We have an order introduced by Counsel President Robinson. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorize the transfer of $68,500 representing the deferred representing the deferred project appropriated under general fund in the FY 2024 capital improvement plan for Fire Department M1 Mobile Repair Vehicle to a new FY 2024 CEIP Project Fire Department H1 Training and Safety Division Vehicle.
Counselor Haddaberg moves it to a second reading. Seeing no objection, so move.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counselor Vito. Order that the Chelsea City Council adopt legislative code as attached.
Move to adopt by roll call, and I'd like to speak on it.
You have the floor, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the honor of being the chairwoman of the Subcommittee on Rules and Ordinances along with Counselor Taylor and Counselor De Jesus. And we have experienced a lot here as councilors the past couple of years. There've been a lot of changes, whether from the pandemic, change in leadership. And we've had a lot of changes within the office. And we wanted to try to codify some of the procedures that we have in our office. Many of our, our staff often have to comply with the rules of the rest of city hall staff, but they really are not city hall staff. They're really the city council staff. And so we wanted to make sure that we were using language and kind of creating a code that can help protect employees as much as possible while they're working here. It's no secret that, you know, the chair of the council, it really depends on who the majority, the power of the majority on the council. And we want to make sure that despite who's in there and that, that the staff is protected because we have seen things happen in the past that really just did not, that we wouldn't want history to repeat itself, let's just say. And so we're trying to codify some language here in talking about ours. And we had a subcommittee on this and we always spoke about this. I don't think it's, there's anything controversial in here. So I am asking the rest of the council to help, to vote to adopt this just to kind of tighten up the office a little bit more so that we can keep doing the business of the people and make sure that the operations and the administration of the city is secure. And if I invite my colleagues to share anything more if I miss anything. Thank you.
Okay, any, any other speakers on, on the matter? Counsel Recupero.
This is a good code, but this code does not apply to the city councilors themselves, right? This code just applies to the employees.
Correct.
I just want to make sure that that's what it is.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
You also-
Yeah, I just wanted to know.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Brown, you have a question?
Yeah, I just had, you know, I, I read it and I went back on the other code of conduct or legislation code. And I just don't understand why we still have the reappointment, which is section one. I know it, it states that every three years that the council gets to reappoint the staff. But I think once we hire a person, that we're hiring them and they go through the, the probation period time, then they should, you know, not have to worry about being appointed every three years if certain council members again feel that it's time to get rid of them. So I had a problem with that, but it's a little thing. I did look back. It's something that I've been here 20 years and we've never used it. And I don't think it's something we would probably use. And it's just really redundant after having it in there. Thank you.
It, it's always been on the books that every, every three years that they would evaluate the staff. But that doesn't mean that you can't take any action before those three years are up if the staff is not working out. So, and so is option also. Any other speakers?
I'll say afterwards. Thank you, Mr. President. I would just echo my sister counselor's comments in saying that, you know, Counselor Taylor, Counselor Damali, and myself were, worked very hard in making sure that we were inclusive of all the different backgrounds and opinions and experiences while we were drafting this. And, and, you know, we did take it to the subcommittee. There was plenty of opportunity for us to have conversations and edit. We were very open with our colleagues about what they felt should be adjusted or implemented or whatnot. So I, I do feel comfortable proceeding this evening.
I also want to thank our city council clerk for doing the legwork and making sure that he was taking notes and writing everything down for us. We couldn't have done it without him.
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor. Seeing no, no other speakers, I ask the clerk for a roll call.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Julia Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia is absent. Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero. Counselor Vito.
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
Counselor Haddaberg. Counselor Vega. And Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Ten members in favor, none opposed, one absent. Legislative code is adopted. Next, we have an order introduced by Counselor Recupero. Order that the city manager provide to each city council a list of direct contact numbers for municipal department heads.
Chair recognizes Counselor Recupero.
I'd like to adopt under suspension. I'd like to speak on it.
Seeing no objection, so move. You have the floor, Counselor.
There is a list. The only thing is, is it has to be updated all the time. And the list, there is a list even in the computer. If you go look in the computer, you will find it. But I would like at least for our clerk, oh, I'm sorry, for Mr. Cunningham to have a list that, that's the current list. So when someone leaves or when someone comes and someone goes or whatever it is, that list should be updated. That's all that is, is to have an updated list of whoever's in and out. It, it's all, so all of us, we can ask and he'll give us the list and then we have no issue with who we gotta call with. You know, in case there's an emergency, it's always nice for the city councilors to have the numbers, the updated list. That's all this is, is a version and updated list.
Thank you, Counselor. Next order.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counselor Recupero. Order that the city manager direct relevant departments to replace the recently installed 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline signs with signs in both English and Spanish, as the existing signs are only in Spanish.
Chair recognizes Counselor Recupero. Seeing no, no objection, you have the floor, Counselor.
On the poles around the city, there is these signs. It's a suicide prevention. It's a great thing. It's nice to have them, but it's written just in Spanish. There's many Spanish. My children are Spanish. They cannot read Spanish. So if you wanted to make it exactly work for everybody, put it in English, too. It couldn't just be Spanish because the Spanish people, they can't read Spanish. Huh? You know, so the thing is to put it in both, English and Spanish. That's all I'm requesting, that it's put in both, so people can understand it on both sides.
Thank you, Counselor.
I'm sorry, I have, I just have a question.
Question.
I don't, is this a city grand program? Is it only a Spanish-speaking line? And maybe that's why it's in Spanish? I just-
No, it was, it was started by Detective Betts, who lost his son to suicide.
Okay, so they, it is, it does exist in, in dual languages.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, all right. Thank you.
Next order.
Next, we have an order introduced by Council President Robinson. Order that the city manager provide an update to the city council as to the status of the Forbes Development Project and how much it has cost the city so far.
Counselor Haddaberg moves to- Yes, because, yes, if we, for the, as there'll be something coming up before the zoning board in regards to Forbes on a revote. They're trying to extend their permit, which was denied by the court. All the courts sent it back, so. Next order.
Next, we have an order introduced by Council President Robinson. Order that the Chelsea City Council request a meeting with the city's delegation to the Massachusetts General Court regarding the proposed soccer stadium at Encore Boston Harbor and what benefits the project would bring to Chelsea.
Counselor- Thank you. Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
So, so this issue goes to something that I've been talking about for, for a while amongst people in the community about how the building of the soccer stadium in Everett is going to negatively affect Chelsea. And not only did they, did Everett get a sweetheart deal in, you know, getting their industrial zones changed to residential where they're going to be able to recoup millions and millions and millions of dollars in, in tax revenue. And, you know, it thereby kind of solidifies our, our industrial zone. So it is very important, there are a lot of things that Chelsea is footing the bill for that we are not being properly compensated by the state. And it is incumbent, I think, upon our delegation to, to, to also represent those needs to the general court so that Chelsea can get the financial aid that it needs. And we don't have to always foot the bill for things that we really can't afford while other wealthier communities are getting off scot-free. Thank you.
Counselor Recupero.
I remember before, when they built the casino, the city of Chelsea was supposed to benefit from it. It cost the city more money and we got less money. So with this, what do we intend to do with this order? Take that up to the gaming commission or take it to the casino? What are we gonna, what, what are we doing this for? To get more money? To get compensated? What is the purpose of it?
Well, we want to be at the table for whatever is gonna come our way that we're entitled to. And actually, right now, it's off the table because the TD Garden has blocked this project moving forward. So we need to be paying attention to what's gonna happen in regards to the stadium.
So we have to pay attention to bring it up to them? Because the last time we brought it up to them, and we were supposed to get something like a million dollars, we ended up with $700,000. So how-
Well, that's the reason why we need to be paying attention to what's going on over there.
To recoup some money because we're gonna be affected by it.
Yeah.
We hope.
Thanks. Thanks. Next order.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counselor Lopez. Order that the city manager instruct the Department of Public Works Commissioner to raise the brightness on all streetlights on Maverick Street, from Shertless Street to Lynn Street Extension.
Chair recognizes Counselor Lopez.
I would love to adopt under suspension.
Seeing no objection, you have the floor, Counselor.
Yes, my, my street from Shertless School all the way to Lynn Extension is dark. I talked to some people there and they told me that it's really dark. I actually went by myself there because I live around. And it's really dark from Shertless to Lynn Extension. From Lynn Extension to Willow is very bright. So I don't know why, it's only halfway, it's bright and the other one, the other part is dark. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next order.
You have a speaker?
I like it.
Oh, sorry about that, Counselor. Counselor Recupero.
I agree with my fellow counselor. The city does adjust the light setting on the light poles. There is an adjustment. So, but then the whole, all the whole city should be lit in the same way. But it seems, and it's not lit the same way all over the place. One, they, when I asked for the first time, they said, "Well, we have the chief of police going around to each street and he determines which part of the street needs it the most and which one is lit." Okay, then at one time, they adjusted them all. The city man, the former city manager decided that we had to adjust all the lights to the same setting. I hope we're not going reverse, where they're going back, they're adjusting the lights in certain streets and not making it brighter for other streets. So we should have maybe a list telling us that all the settings are equal all over the place. That's, I, I think it's only fair to make sure that every street has the same setting.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other speakers on the motion? Seeing none, ask the clerk to read the next order.
Next, we have an order introduced by Councilors Lopez and Recupero. Order that the city manager and all relevant department heads provide the city council an update from Cataldo Ambulance as to their response times to calls for service in Chelsea.
Chair recognizes Counsel Lopez.
I'd like to adopt under suspension. Also, I would like to speak on it.
Seeing no objection, you have the floor, Counselor.
Yes, it's, it's a question about an ambulance when there's an emergency in the city. And I just want an update, how long does it take for an ambulance to get to any emergencies? And is, if it's there, always an ambulance available for the community when there's an emergency? I heard something from some people and I just want to make sure, I, I want whoever's in charge for this to clarify. Sometimes when there's an emergency, Cataldo ambulance is always late, so I just want to find that.
Okay, Counselor. Counselor Recupero.
I agree with my fellow counselor. Not too long ago, they had an incident on, was it Maverick Street and Shawman Street? And the first responder is always the fire department. They always show up on time. We just want to know, because from that incident, it took a little while. People were complaining that the ambulance took a lot longer to get to us. So we only want to find out exactly what is the amount of time from one to go to respond, to, to where it goes. That's all we're asking is what is the amount of time? How long does it take you to go to any place? We know that the cities, well, by the fire department, they go there first, so they always have the fire department. The thing is, is how long does it take an ambulance to get there? That's all it is. And we want to know exactly how long it takes. What is the response time?
Thank you, Counselor. Next order.
Next, we have an order introduced by Council President Robinson. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorize the appropriation of $140,000 from the General Stabilization Fund.
Chair recognizes Counsel Haddaberg.
Move to second reading and also send to the subcommittee to discuss.
That should go with the job descriptions.
Yeah.
Thank you. Next order.
Next, we have an order introduced by Council President Robinson. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorize the appropriation of $150,000 from the General Stabilization Account to a new FY 24 CEIP Project Account for marginal street side-
Counselor Haddaberg moves it to a second reading and also refer back to the conference.
Next, we have an order introduced by Council President Robinson. Order that in accordance with Section 2-6 of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, the Chelsea City Council waives the remainder of the 12-month probationary period and appoints Clifford Cunningham as clerk to the city council for a period of five years at the grade of MM7 Step 1 with the duties and responsibilities as described in the updrafted job summary attached.
Counselor Haddaberg.
Motion to adopt by roll call.
By roll call.
No, 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 no. We already sent it to the subcommittee twice.
Right, so-
So, huh?
The motion on the floor is a roll call vote on the adoption.
I'm gonna make a motion to change from $75,000 to $67,000.
I'm gonna rule that out of order. I'm gonna rule that out of order.
Okay, rule it out of order.
The motion on the, Counselor.
I would like to send it to the subcommittee because, so the new city council that are coming in get involved with this.
This, this body was assigned to take care of this business, not the new-
But we didn't finish it.
Yeah. The motion on the floor is to roll, roll call on the adoption.
To send a subcommittee to discuss. We never discussed this. I never had that. I just heard until we got the package.
So we have a motion and a motion to amend. Vote the motion to amend.
Okay. You want to send it to conference?
Yes.
All right. Did you want to speak on a matter, on the amendment? Huh? Well, you want to speak on the amendment or you want to speak on the original motion?
Whatever, whenever I can speak. I'll speak on the amendment.
Okay, fine.
I don't have nothing to say about the amendment, but sure. Okay, so I feel like there's like this battle that happens between the people that have been here and like, we've always done things this way. And then there's people that are like, well, look, we have some ideas on how things could look different. We raise the salary for city councilors. We've seen so many unprecedented things happen in the past couple of years for some of the councilors, for me, in the past eight years that I've been here. With full respect to Paul Casino and the predecessors in that office, the fact of the matter is that this position of the clerk for the city council has elevated to levels unimaginable. Prior, it was a posi, it was a part-time position where the previous city council clerk got paid, I believe it was $32,000 was the salary, I believe, and it was part-time. He didn't do much computer work. He wasn't able to send out emails. In the time that we've hired the city council clerk, they really cleaned up that office. You can see it. It's different. It's spacious. They've moved things around. They're taking care of us. They're handling all of this. Emails are constantly coming in. We have revised old stationery that we had there of our council rules to order that looked, that they had been photocopied from like 1967. And, and, and it's all brand new. It's clean. We're organized. I just think that it's time that we start to take ourselves a little more serious. We have new councilors coming in. We have a new city manager. And I think it's important for us to fund this office and the people in these roles to be able to do the work. It is not easy to deal with 11 city councilors and 11 different personalities. Some of us come in and we say, hey, how you doing? And we don't interact with the staff as much. Other ones are like, hey, I need this. Other ones are, it's your job. It's really hard to be able to manage those responsibilities. And they hold down the fort for us day in and day out. They inter, interact with all the different departments. And if we're not willing to take care of our staff and show how, how we appreciate our staff, then, then that really just sends a message that we don't have confidence in our ability to be able to do the work of the people and, and, and govern. And so I just want to make sure that, you know, we had a speaker speak early about the cost of living. And, and the fact of the matter is, I think it's time that we really just start to look at some of these positions that have been funded, that the salary was decided decades ago and start to reevaluate and think, maybe it's time we, you know, join the modern world. It's 2023, and I think that that position- It's twenty twenty-three, and I think that that position has evolved into something that I, beyond expectations. To be quite honest, I was part of the hiring committee along with Councilor Jesus, Councilor Taylor, and I believe Council Robinson, when we interviewed the city council clerk. And I was skeptical, because I remember him as a counselor, and I'm like, "I don't, I don't think this is going to work." But in the time that I read, it's true. Um, but, and so, I was so skeptical that I said, "Well, why don't we give him a twelve-month probationary period?", which is absolutely ludicrous, to be honest, because usually people get three months. He, he decided to go for it. We made a stipulation that he had to take a, a class on, uh, parliamentary, but thank you, everybody, for your support, on parliamentary procedure, and, and he did that. And so, I just think that, I think we should waive the twelve-month probationary period, hands down. And I think that, um, it's time to fund that position what it deserves. And I think it's just a, a, a representation of how we take, how serious we take ourselves and, and our office, and we need to take care of our staff.
Thank you, Councilor. Chair recognizes Council Recuperal.
I have no issue with what this is here. The issue is, when we went to subcommittee, we stopped it. So, we didn't get, we, we didn't finish the subcommittee on it. And we didn't, all of us decide, say, "This is what we're going to do." So, what my intention is, just send, go, send it back, and all of us, and even the new councilors that come in, they should be, because they're going to be working. They should be, have some input on this, because we never finished it. As you can say, Mr. President, when you ran the meeting, you stopped the meeting short, didn't you? You said, "We already have enough time," so we didn't finish the subcommittee. That we, that we finished the subcommittee, yes or no?
Did you have an opportunity to go back and follow up and ask questions?
I'll ask questions, but I, my question?
That's part of, part of your responsibility.
The question is when the whole body's there, and everybody asks question to each other.
Well, right now, we're?
We didn't finish it.
Right now, we're going to vote on your motion, whether we should send it to conference. A yes vote will be to send it to conference. Let me finish. A yes vote will send it to conference, and a no vote won't.
I'm not against giving them a race.
Council Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't going to speak again. Uh, we had a order before, it's early tonight, and it talked about three years that we can go back and, you know, not appoint. Here's a violation of that order right now. You're talking about having someone here for five years. I'm a hundred percent on voting in favor of this tonight for that position. We know what we have. We have a great employee. But again, early on this afternoon, you said that this didn't exist because we, every three years, we had to go back. So, you're in con, you, 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 right now, you're in violation of that, because every three years, we would have to go back and reappoint them, according to what we voted on for the new codes of ethics and rules. But that's exactly what I was saying. When we get someone like the person that we described and the person that we have, we have an opportunity to keep them forever, and as long as Paul Casino, as someone said. But again, we have stipulations in there that can make people fearful of those things, because every three years, maybe they, someone may not like my, my work, or, you know, they didn't speak to me for three months, and now they're going to get a fiction of folks who vote against me. So, I think, again, if we're going to have this here, I'm in favor of voting for this tonight, but let's, again, take that three-year thing out that we have to reinvent or look at something happen. Here's an incident, here's a situation where we've had a, a candidate, a broader man. We said, "Hey, get rid of the rest of the twelve-month probation. We want you." We want to keep people, we don't need stipulations. Thank you.
Uh, Council, for the record, in section four, lengthened term of appointment, the clerk of the city council and the legislative aid administrative assistants will be hired for five-year terms with no limit on the number of terms they may be reappointed.
But I understand that, but you also have something that states every three years that they have to be reappointed.
Nope, that was amended to this. Now, it's in the code.
Get rid of it.
Just a clarification. You said something about three years earlier. Can you just remind me what that is? Because I think that that's where the confusion is.
Right, years ago, years ago, the appointment was for, was for three years. You amended it to five years.
When we adopted the legislative code.
Right.
Got it, thank you.
Okay. So, we're back to the amendment about sending it back to conference. A yes vote will send it to conference, and no vote will be against.
Council Brown?
No.
Council Judith Garcia?
No.
Council Tenere Garcia is absent. Council Lopez?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
No.
Council Recuperal?
Yes.
Council Vito?
No.
Council DeJesus?
No.
Council Haddaberg?
No.
Council Vega?
No.
Council Taylor?
No.
Two members in favor, eight opposed, one absent. The amendment to refer to subcommittee on conference has been rejected.
Now, we're back to the original order. Chair recognizes Council Haddaberg.
I'd like to speak on this motion. I also will be voting for this motion, and I wish to simply take a moment to thank our staff and, and say that I'm voting for this. I believe that we actually need to increase salaries very deeply, across the board almost, in city hall. I believe that our salaries have fallen behind where they need to be in the market. I see people's salaries every day for work. I talk to people in an enormous variety of industries. And I believe that, generally speaking, I believe our employees do good work. I believe they do hard work. I believe we need to keep up with the times and pay more. This actually does dovetail one of the hardest votes for me. As, as odd as it seems, that links right in with this, is the vote on the, the COLA, which I'll talk more about when it actually comes up for vote next time. We'll move it to a second reading this time. But there's a tension between what we pay retirees and what we pay current staff. I expect to be voting for the COLA increase, but it's a painful one, because the money that we spend on that takes directly away from a project to increase salaries for current staff, providing current services. And, um, I believe they're both very important, but I believe we need to be focusing on current employees, and that's where the money has to go first. So, there's a tension there. I wanted to call it out. I think we need to think more about it in the future, and there's a long conversation.
Thank you, Council. Council Taylor?
So, I was on the subcommittee that hired the clerk, and I must say, I'll claim credit for, for being his first fan and, and trying to, trying to convince my fellow counselors that this was going to be a good move. I think history has borne me out on this, and so, I appreciate the job that, that's been done. I think the work that was put into the updating the legislative code was, was, was really unbelievable. It, it, there was a lot of thought and effort that went into that. We, we took it to subcommittee, got the okay on all the legalities, and it was first-class. And so, I agree with, with my fellow counselor regarding the pay of employees. I know from my own experience, running my own business, a, a large business, which with around seven hundred employees, that the key to success is having good people. And you cannot be successful without good people. So, that goes for people here, I think, at, at, at city hall, too. You know, I'm, I'm a fiscal conservative, but I know where money is well-spent. So, you know, I think that there's lots of things that we might reduce spending on. This, however, is not one of them. So, I will be voting in favor for that. And for the record, I'll also be voting for the COLA. I think it's, it's, it's about time. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Recuperal.
What are we voting on, the COLA increase?
No.
Talking about Clifford, right?
Yes.
Well, all right. I was Clifford's biggest supporter when he first got hired. I have no issue with Clifford. Clifford's very competent. Clifford knows what he's doing. So, I have no issue with that. The only issue I ever had is, you should have went, you should have finished the subcommittee, because you stopped at three-quarters of the way. When you go to a subcommittee, finish the whole thing. That was the whole thing, should have been finished, which it wasn't finished. But as far as Clifford being qualified for the job, he's qualified. He's probably the best candidate you're going to see. He's a thorough guy, he does his job. No, there's no complaints when it comes to Clifford about that type of stuff. That's what he does. He's precise. I don't know, maybe Clifford sometimes you bend a little, but he doesn't bend, but that's okay. That's his own issue. But as far as being with the job, he knows exactly what he's doing, and he goes. So, I got no problem. The only thing I wanted to send to the subcommittee was, because we never finished the subcommittee. That was it. And so, I guess we'll just vote on it and pay him.
Council Lopez?
Yes, that was my issue also, because we actually, I actually didn't finish to hear about this until we got the package. So, that was my only issue regarding Clifford doing his job. Of course, he does his job. I know Clifford for a long time. We actually worked together. And, uh, my issue was regarding the subcommittee, the, the subcommittee. Thank you.
How grateful we are to have Clifford on board. I would just remind councilors that we have lengthy conversations about how to keep up with having Chelsea residents in preference for Chelsea positions. And this is one of the biggest obstacles that we face is, you can't afford to live in Chelsea if your salary doesn't meet the high cost of living. So, that, I'll just add that to, to the floor.
Council Vito?
Thank you, Mr. President. I can go on and on and say how I've been changed in learning about all the beautiful and amazing things that the city council clerk can do. But what I really just want to say is the thought that has gone into this work. We didn't just pull out salaries out of thin air. It was comparable to positions around the city, governments across the city. It was compared with notes from human resources. We didn't just pull out a legislative code. We pulled existing documentation from the city and revised it to meet our specific needs. We didn't just, we didn't just pull this out of thin air. There's been a lot of thought and research that has gone into it. And I will push back that, in the subcommittee, it was referenced about the salary. We didn't go too deep into it, but I don't think that that was the part that, that we didn't discuss. The part that we didn't discuss was more run-of-the-mill things that really weren't controversial at all. So, I'll obviously be voting in favor of this. And I really just want to thank, um, Councilor, the Assistant Councilor, Taylor. We have been on multiple subcommittees in the past, um, this term, and it's really been an honor to work with you all and, and the, and what we've been able to do. And, you know, from the outside, you'll think, "What are those three doing in a room?" But we really work really well together, and we really just showed that when we put the needs of the people before our own ego, that, you know, you can get good work done. And I want to thank, um, our city council clerk for the work in supporting us and resourcing us so that we are able to do our work here.
Seeing no other speakers, I'll ask the clerk to call a roll call on the adoption.
Council Brown? Is absent. Council Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Council Tenere Garcia is absent. Council Lopez?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Recuperal? Council Vito?
Yes.
Council DeJesus?
Yes.
Council Haddaberg?
Yes.
Council Vega?
Yes.
And Council Taylor?
Yes.
Council Brown has to be recorded as a yes vote.
With the yes vote amended, final roll call is ten in favor, none opposed, one absent. Order is adopted.
The next order, Counselor?
Next, we have an order introduced by Council President Robinson. Order that the Chelsea City Council accepts Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty-two, Section twenty A, indemnifying members of the Chelsea Retire.
Chair recognizes Council Haddaberg.
Motion to do this to a second reading as amended. Note that the original order was related to an indemnity that was a little bit confused. The actual order is related to the COLA.
As amended.
The amendment reads, "Be it further order that the Chelsea City Council adopts the increase of the base COLA cost of living allowance from twelve thousand to fifteen thousand for retirees under the Chelsea Retirement System effective July first, twenty twenty-four, pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter thirty-two, Section one oh three J."
And Haddaberg, move it to a second reading, which will be brought up on December eighteenth.
Next, we have an order introduced by Council President Robinson, received late.
We have a late order that was submitted by me.
Motion to accept the late order.
Seeing no objections.
Order that in accordance with section two dash six of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, the Chelsea City Council hires Jessica Carmonati as a part-time temporary consultant to the city council, and be it further order that the position will involve training the legislative aid administrative assistant upon their hire by the city council. And be it further order that compensation for the part-time consultant position will be fifty dollars per hour for a period not to exceed twenty total hours, and will not be eligible for other benefits.
Chair recognizes Council Haddaberg.
Motion to adopt by roll call vote. I'll speak on it briefly.
Yes.
Just to explain what we're doing here, the, the city council's, we are, the administrative assistant has stepped down from the position. This order simply allows us to retain her services for a period as we hire someone new, assist with training, assist with filling the gap. So, we're essentially carrying the office. She's been quite gracious in working with us.
Any other speakers?
Well, I just don't, like, I just don't know how we're able to just come up with an order and adopt this on the fly without even having a discussion about it. I mean, we're talking about somebody that I thought was leaving, and now we're trying to retain their services, and I'm, she's, listen, no, I have no qualms. They've done amazing work, but no dialogue? We just come in here, and it's like, "Here, let's pay someone fifty dollars an hour in our office." Like, I'm okay with giving the work, but I think we should at least have discussed it.
Actually, the, the reason that, that it came in as a late order, she is, she did leave us, all right? But she did make a commitment that when we hired somebody, that she would come in and take the time to train that person, and we need to do that before the end of the year.
So, this is just for the training purposes, or is this?
Just for training purposes, twenty hours max. We think it can be done in fifteen hours.
And is this the same amount that we offered to Fatima when Fatima did it?
Yeah, Fatima, and also what we did to Paul Casino.
Okay. I just, that, these are the type of questions I thought we should ask the subcommittee. But that's fine. I mean, I, I, no issue.
So, yeah. Ask the clerk on a roll call.
Council Brown?
Yes.
Council Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Council Tenere Garcia is absent. Council Lopez?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Recuperal? Council Vito?
Yes.
Council DeJesus?
Yes.
Council Haddaberg?
Yes.
Council Vega?
Yes.
And Council Taylor?
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent. Order is adopted. Move on to public announcements.
We have any public announcements? Council Recuperal?
Isn't there another late order?
No, we covered all of them.
The resolution? Oh, it was separate, it gave it separate, sorry. Got it.
Council Recuperal, you have the floor.
Yes, I have a public announcement. The public announcement I have is that lately, we seem to be having a lot of issues with the young teenagers in the schools, and today, there was a big problem. And, uh, there seems to be, um, I don't know what we can do about it, but there seems to be all kinds of problems for the past month. And there's been all kinds of, uh, I don't know what's going on. I think what's happening again is gang bangers are coming all over the city and the new generation of young men and women, because women are involved, too. Women are just as bad as men sometimes. You can't just say, "Men is the worst ones." And it's happening all over the high school, and it's happening in the, near the Boys and Girls Club. And today, it happened on Hawthorne Street, where a young kid got stabbed. So, I think all this is happening because our city is not investing in IUs. It's not making a community center. This city needs a community center. It's the greatest thing. A community center helps all the kids. They get along with each other. They have nothing to do. You tell me what they have to do. They're also, all the time, they say, "There's plenty to do in this city." What, go to the Boys and Girls Club? Once they get fourteen, thirteen years old, they do not want to go there anymore. There's no other place. There's no other place. Then you have the community schools. The community schools are always, there's a limit, how many people they can take, and you have to make an appointment. So, there's really nothing to, there's no motivation for the young men and women of our city to have something. You have to have a community center. When stuff like this happens, that is the greatest thing this city could do.